To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call the school board meeting on District 544 at quarter and clerk, you need to call please.
Do you need an agenda?
I will, yes. Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knutson.
Here.
Melanie Cole. DiLemke.
Here.
Missy Hermes present, Stephen Biggessa.
Here.
We have a forum.
Can you get a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
A second?
A second.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, aye. Our agenda is approved. We have a resolution on acknowledgements. Thank you to Amy Teetz for the donation of an infant CPR doll to the school. Otter Tail County Historical Society for their donation of Earth and Space Science lessons and STEM materials to the Lincoln School and the area learning center. A thank you to Rachel Cox, Jen Jensen, and the Otter Girls Swim Team for their donation towards the Wellness Room and the FHS physical. Thank you to Ferguson Falls 544 Education Foundation for their donations for many different grants and classroom wish lists. And a thank you to Jared McCauley for the donation to Mr. Van Santen's third grade classroom in Adams Elementary. Could someone offer that resolution for its adoption?
I'll offer the resolution and move for its adoption.
And a second?
A second.
Steve, let's go. Missy, will you take roll?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Stephen Biggessa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Then we'll move into our reports and we'll kick off with Kirby Anderson.
Okay, no report for activities, we haven't been meeting. The Finance Committee meeting, we did meet on September 19th and we did see the results of that meeting at our last board meeting where we talked about the choosing taxation meeting coming up and when we made the resolution to, for the taxing. On the 544 Foundation, we have had two meetings since my last report. On September 12th, we met and it was reported that we served about 400 people at the staff luncheon on Thursday, August 29th. Our Otter Pride Night, we served about 550 on September 6th, Friday night, September 6th. There were 59 classroom wish lists that were funded and we have three new board members, Alicia Helgeson, Kelsey Felstool, and Kelly Longton, and so they just, they were at their first meeting. And that was the other day on October 10th, that was our second meeting since my last report. And there we were talking about the distinguished alumni Hall of Fame events went well. We're lining up to have some of our 544 Foundation members on the radio with Mary Dolan. On the Grant Committee, they reported there were 26 requests and they had a budget of $60,000 and with requests worth quite a bit less than that, so they funded all 26 requests and I believe those requests were somewhere in the neighborhood of $34,000. And so our next meeting will be Thursday, November 14th and I believe it's going to be at the Lincoln School, so that's my reports.
Awesome, any questions for Kirby? Alright, thanks Kirby. And we'll move on to Melanie Cole.
Alright, Region One Board met twice since I last reported. Last week, we had a special meeting where we did interviews for the new director position, which was offered to a man named Taylor Jones, which Andy accepted, so he is coming to that service, Joint Powers Group with experience, love experience in special ed, residential and day treatment programming. He also was their purchasing person and I just wore a variety of hats in that institution or that whole organization, so kind of excited about that whole process. And that was the gist of our meeting prior, we really talked about how we would coordinate this. Otherwise, business at Region One continues, we did a few staffing changes and just got the updates on the numbers of schools taking the programs we offer. So that was Region One. Meet and confer has not met and then I have started working or attending the Family Service Co-op as an outcropping of this role on their advisory board, so four school attendants. But I'll get the exact term to you, Elaine, we had a meeting on that this week, or last week rather, where the discussion was about bringing in another AmeriCorps position, this one for mental wellness. And they are having, they do a little bit of training, they do some training with the staff before they move them out and have been having some success out of them. So that will come to the larger board, so it's not up for our discussion yet until it comes through that meeting, but that's all I have.
Any questions for Melanie? Okay, and Missy Hermes.
Okay, Curriculum Review meets next Monday. Policy Committee, you've been given those policies and we'll be voting on them tonight, so there are Policy 432 and the Policy 511, that was the one that was discussed in the work session, so those suggestions that other members of the school board have brought to us and included that. And then 516 and 704, that's just great examples of how when the Policy Committee meets, we're taking information in from other members on our staff. And so 516, what on student medication and telehealth, that's our nurse, our school nurse who suggested those changes and updates. And then 704 came out of the Finance Committee on development and maintenance, kind of, yeah, development and maintenance of inventory fixed assets and then, so capitalization was a big part of that.
Any questions for Missy? Okay, then I'm next. She touched on policy a little bit. Buildings and Grounds has met a couple of different times to just assess all the needs throughout the district and we're being tasked with kind of identifying what are the top priorities to utilize some of our expenditures on and I haven't come up with that definite list quite yet, but we're starting to kind of weed things out and move in the right direction. And then the Wellness Committee met and just a couple of highlights from that. The State of Minnesota did a youth tobacco survey and showed that vaping went down by 5% in the schools, but signs of dependency have gone up. There's no number associated with it, just some of the questions, I guess, identified that dependence was there and increasing. October 9th was Walk to School Day and they, we talked a little bit about the Wellness Room and what kind of resources and what kind of services we're going to be in there. So the Thrive Initiative, some of the Thrive tools were brought up and then also Credible Mind Resources. Credible Mind is something that Otter Tail County has been promoting and you'll see it in the hallways along with Thrive, there's Credible Mind and you can scan a QR code and some of the things on there are different learning labs, self empowerment, how to cope with environmental disasters, assessments, and it's something that the county has paid for and it's, so it's a free service for all Otter Tail County residents right now. And if I'm understanding, it was quite expensive, so they're just encouraging anyone in the county to take advantage of it. It's called Credible Minds. I know there is a couple of flyers down the hall there, if you guys go check it out. And then I did, I had to leave for the last probably 15 minutes, but it looks like going was covered just briefly. Some of the ideas were self-defense or self-protection, they were trying to, kind of going back with the term, should be offered within PE classes possibly. Kevin Sontable was listed as maybe a person to go to to get that lined up. And then Lance spoke a little bit about his request for a registered dietitian, which I believe we're approving tonight, her position, to work alongside him and just continuing to implement more fruits and veggies and take a look at some of the healthier options within all of the food circus areas. So, oh, and then the last thing, with the yard signs that were sold last spring to the seniors, brought in right around $2,000 and profit that the committee came away with was $870 to use towards employee wellness or staff wellness for this next school year. So there was a little bit of conversation on how to utilize those funds, so it looks like a mini survey might be coming out, just to kind of gauge.
You think they might do that again this year too?
I think so. I think that'll be kind of that groups fundraiser, I guess, to keep that pot available. Yeah, it was a good meeting. Any questions? Alright, then we'll move on to Matt, Minnesota High School League.
Yeah, they met on Thursday, October 3rd, the directors did, and so one of the first things I just wanted to highlight, that we've talked about quite a bit, is that they hired a consultant, a public relations and communication consultant for communication analysis and developed a strategic communication plan, so, well, they're working on it, so. And I will, I will say this, is that I did see the first that we could jump on to, one of the things that I believe passed, and I don't know if Super Drake, if you had heard it back yet or not, about the ninth grade conference.
At the vote?
Yes.
I've not heard.
I'm anticipating that that's going to pass, is that the ninth grade, put it under a governance of Minnesota High School League, so that'll be nine through 12. And then they asked, that has been changed to the bylaws because of that, but they did do that through social media, so you can actually watch it and then YouTube it, so. So they do have, they are capable of doing it if they so choose to do it, but it was nice to see it that it was done and you were able to watch it, you know, and just some of the rationale and everything, you know, a lot of the rationale that they had made sense, so I thought it was just good that they actually took the effort to do that. So that's one of their goals also, so small steps we're moving, so I thought that was good. Another thing that they're doing this year, and they've done it every so often, is the Minnesota State High School League Coaches Association, they're kind of advocating a new book that's been sent out to about 1,300 books, actually had to be sent out to Minnesota High School coaches and Hassan Championship Behaviors, this is called. And so they've done this periodically and usually the books are really good, so just again, not just about winning, but how to win and some of the things that go with it, so I think it's really good about just climate and culture and things of that, what you're trying to do as a team. And then another thing that they did this year is that they approved that they are going to start doing more seating, yeah, I know we had talked about it for basketball and stuff, while they now are going to start seating in their classifications, one through eight, for, I'm talking now state, I'm talking at state, because there are sections that are seated, but for baseball, boys and girls, lacrosse, softball, that's now get seated, so a few more of those sports are starting to get seated. Another big thing that's coming up here, and this just happens every two years, is they kind of released kind of the timeline for the reclassification and placement for teams, for district football and a timeline, and that also affects all other sports. So for the 2025, 2026, and then 2026, 2027, it looks like in February 24th, members, schools will be informed of the league and their new football co-ops and how we're going to be played, so I'm sure coaches will be watching and activities directors, so that's usually a big thing. And then the other thing is they did approve some strategic planning for this 24, 25 school year, and again, the big one that they approved, I think that again is to show us their willingness is the league will promote and support its mission, beliefs, and values of education-based activities and athletes through effective communication systems and mediums. So they are going to be working on that, so I thought that was good, so hopefully they will follow through with that and that their communication will be better in all forms. That's what I have to report.
Any questions for Matt?
No, but that'd be a great legacy for you now. As you exit the board. I change the state high school league.
It would be nice.
Alright, then our next report is Stephen Biggessa.
For staff development, I ended up having a conflict, I didn't attend the meeting, but I did get the minutes and an idea of what's happened. It was a pretty short meeting. The overall budget, again, they started at $10,000 above budget, just they didn't spend all the money last year, so currently they're actually, they're down to $48,000 now with a few requests that are coming through. So folks, get your requests in, there's some money there for you to better your job. They talked a bit about the format of the staff development days on January 17th and February 28th, and they've narrowed down the topics to six of them, American Indian History and Culture, it's Ricky White's coming to do that, English Language Learner, we had a person, but they are, they backed up, so they're looking at finding somebody else, Positive Behavior Intervention, Reading, and Accommodation Modification, Adaptation of Curriculum Materials and Strategies, and another session on mental illness. But they had above four staff requests to approve as well, but, oh, you know what, and Suicide Prevention and Cultural Competency, sorry, I didn't see those. So like I said, it was a short meeting, kind of the same stuff that they covered before, they're just trying to get those staff development days nailed down and that's about it, so that's all I got.
Any questions for Steve?
I just have one question real quick, just on, you know, a lot of times for those that are applying from, it seems like it's, especially at the high school level, certain departments that seem to apply more often for professional development outside the school. Has there ever been discussion just with those departments that seem never to apply and how to encourage them to apply or look for something to?
Well, and that's, that's a question I asked at a previous meeting, Michael, the people know these opportunities that are out there and the answer that I got was yes, but people just haven't shown them just enough time, you know, but it's like, we have all, we have a lot of money that is available for this stuff, which, you know, not always is available with other types of employers, but I think that'd be a topic of another meeting, I think, once we get through the staff development days, like, you know, how do you get the word out? And even in the, I don't know if they call it bylaws or the policies, that, you know, one department can't monopolize all the money either, it has to be spread out between grades and buildings and whatnot, so it is something that I know I've brought up, I'm sure other people brought up too, but just getting the word out that there is something available, I think would be very helpful and.
Kristin Simon-Guard does send out a monthly email to all staff as a reminder to send in their, those requests. And not too long ago, when Kristin Tool was still the chair of that committee, there was a survey done, they did go back and look at which departments request money and which don't.
I'm just thinking on those that don't, is there a way to get them to look to apply or look for some professional development?
Yeah, that'd be great.
It would be nice to see. Other departments, I guess, have initiatives to, that they want to go attend and stuff like that, which would help them professionally in a classroom, so.
Yeah, so no, the intention is to spread, but it doesn't end up happening, usually.
Any other questions for Steve? I'm gonna move on to Super Drake.
Good evening. A couple thank yous, Farmer State Bank for the tailgating at last Friday's football game, cheeseburgers, brats, looked, I had the burger, the brats looked delicious as well, I know people really, really appreciated it, so huge thank you and a beautiful night for a football game. Also want to thank the 544 Education Foundation for the grants that they put towards the classrooms and the teacher wish lists, really very generous, and Craig Peterson wrote a really, really nice thank you letter to the foundation about the upgrades to the auditorium and saw it was really nice to see as well. Some congratulatory notes, now that we're kind of transitioning now towards the end of the fall season, congratulations to our girls tennis team, they are the first tennis team, boys or girls, to win the CLC championship, so that was a huge accomplishment. And then we do have Hattie Fullheart and Ashton Lil, doubles team that have qualified for state out of a very tough section. And also wanted to say congratulations to Ruby Ellison, who took third place, had a really nice tournament, from what I understood, and unfortunately, just the top two individual finishers move on to state, but she had a fantastic tournament. Our girls swimming team won the true team section title, so they will go on to compete for true team state, so congratulations to the girls swimming team. The boys are on a really nice run for soccer, I believe they were seeded fourth, but they defeated Pelican Rapids in a shootout and then shut out Hillcrest to win the north half of the section, the subsection, and so they will go on tomorrow night to play St. Cloud Cathedral, so good luck to the boys. The winner of that game would qualify for the state. And then this Wednesday, so this is MEA week, so it's a little different schedule, but this Wednesday, we will be hosting the Battle of Unbeaten's as our Ferguson Falls Otters Football Team hosts the Morris Area Tigers. The winner of that game will be the top seed in the section, the loser will be the second seed, but it should be again, a really nice evening for a great matchup between two unbeaten teams, so I hope the community can attend. Then congratulations to our middle school Knowledge Bowl team, they won the, or earned the Moving on Up Award, starting in 12th place and ending in third place, so congratulations to them. In Knowledge Bowl, if you're not familiar with it, there is a written pre-test that the teams take, and based on your results of the written test, you get placed in various rooms and there's three teams per room, and as your score indicates, you can move up rooms or down rooms, and the top room would have the current first, second, and third place teams in it by score, but that jostles from round to round, so for them to go from 12th place all the way up to third meant that they were performing really, really well in the head-to-head competitions in the various rooms, so nice job. I want to talk a little bit to the community about the new school proposal. Tonight, I want to talk about the economics and efficiencies that are for the community's consideration. So the option is to, and from our district, we believe this is the most conservative option, is to build a new third through fifth grade elementary school at a cost of $48.84 million over 22 years. For the average homeowner with a house valued at $250,000, that's $7.17 a month, that's just under 25 cents a day. Question number two, which could only be passed if question number one is approved by our public, is for $910,000, and that is to augment the green space with a middle school softball slash baseball field and also a middle school soccer field. So what are the advantages to this proposal? I'm going to go through three options tonight for our community's consideration, this being option one. It allows us to address safety concerns present at both McKinley and Adams, addresses space concerns, in particular, having appropriate space for music, large group rehearsals, the special ed spaces, Title I spaces, English Language Learner spaces, all those pieces being important in supporting the growth and development of every child in our district. It addresses the roughly 16 million, and that's inflation included, from the ATS and R report of 20, fall of 2021, on Adams and McKinley, would address the undersized gyms, cafeteria, kitchens, et cetera, and then deal just with some operational efficiencies. When you look at the cost of running two smaller schools, school buildings, there would be some operational efficiencies, which we calculate at over $100,000 annually if we were to combine into a single slightly larger building. What's the disadvantage? The only disadvantage is the tax impact, and so that's what the community has to decide if the $7.17 on average per month is a good use of the community's financial resources. If you don't like option one with a new third through fifth grade school, another option then before us, because we have $16 million worth of work in those two buildings, would be to submit a review and comment to the Minnesota Department of Education, asking to go before the voters for a 16 to 20 million dollar bond, which would go towards improving both of those 85-year-old buildings. Would the voters approve that kind of plan? That would be one question on my mind and I'm sure on the minds of the board. It would have a lower cost to taxpayers, it would free up maintenance dollars to meet the needs of other district buildings, however, it is, in my mind, very unclear whether MDE would support 16 million into two 85-year-old buildings. If we think back towards the comments on, that the department gave us on our review and comment, even looking at those two buildings, rather than putting more money into them, the department said building new is a more, is in the community's better interest, so that was their take on the current review and comment that put this bond in front of the public on November 5th. The plan does nothing to address all the other issues or concerns with McKinley and Adams that have been discussed at length, and the plan offers nothing in the way of increased operational efficiencies, so because you're operating two smaller buildings, it's going to reduce our ability to run efficiently and it's going to be more expensive. Option number three, is the community decides now isn't the time to address any of the district's building needs, so the can gets kicked down the road. What that means is on the advantage is that the tax impact is postponed, but that, there's a price to that approach. Construction costs on average raise 4% per year, that's been consistent over the last 20 years, so building a new school is never going to become cheaper than what it is right now, and interest rates are relatively favorable in the grand scheme of things. But you also have the issue of the district needing to maintain nearly $700,000 of facilities that average 45 years of age, and we simply do not have the long-term facilities revenue and the capital dollars coming in to address all of those building needs year over year. So what that means is the district's going to be forced to make difficult decisions and it can choose what it's able to pay for and what it isn't, and over time, you're going to see the condition of our buildings steadily deteriorate because we don't have the operational dollars to address our aging infrastructure. because we don't have the operational dollars to address our aging infrastructure. So on the kick the can strategy, what happens? What's the cost for waiting? In five years, you've taken a forty-eight point eight-four million dollar bond, and you've turned it into fifty-nine million. If you wait twenty years, you're approaching a hundred and ten million dollars. So the needs don't disappear, the costs don't go down, and it's something that the community needs to consider as we approach November fifth. I want to talk a little bit about the Ag to School Tax Credit, there's been a little bit of confusion out there about how this works. It's a seventy percent subsidy on ag land, and it's based on the number of acres you have and the market valuation of those acres. So the example that I've done for folks is to take farmland that's valued, this is homestead property, five thousand dollars per acre. The farmer in this case has five hundred acres, and the cost annual tax impact is thirty-two cents per acre. So you multiply thirty-two cents per acre times five hundred, that's a total of a hundred and sixty dollars annually to support this bond. As your valuations change, that factor per acre changes, and you just multiply that by the number of acres you own. On the website, Ellers has set up a customizable, or custom quote for ag land, since it is a little bit more complicated, but people can go on there and have a custom tax impact calculated for them. This is another example of agricultural non-homestead, so we'll stay with the five thousand per acre, five hundred acres. Just note that the annual tax impact doubles in this case, it's sixty-four cents an acre, but that still only results in an annual tax impact, if passed, of three-hundred-and-twenty dollars. There's a couple forms of homestead credit. The first, and they have different stipulations or qualifications for them. The first one has to do with household income and meeting some eligibility thresholds. This is for people that have a combined household income of under a hundred and thirty-five thousand, four-hundred-and-ten dollars. And there's a chart that corresponds to the amount of taxes that you pay and some reduction in your tax impact based on that household income number and the property tax that's been assessed to you. And that information can be found online with Minnesota State System. There is also another tax credit program that has to do with your valuation increasing and your tax increasing by more than twelve percent in a single year. The net property tax increase has to be at least a hundred dollars, and the tax increase cannot be driven by home improvements that you've made to your property. But that's another piece that people have available to them to reduce the tax impact on these, this bond. Then the last one I'll talk about briefly tonight is the Senior Citizen Property Tax Deferral. At least one of the couple, if there's a couple, has to be sixty-five years or older, and the spouse at least sixty-two. Your household income cap is ninety-six thousand dollars or less, you have to have lived in your home for at least five years, and your home has to have been homesteaded for five years. There's some mortgage pieces on here, but essentially what it does is it assigns a property tax of three percent of your total household income. The state pays the remainder of your property taxes, but people need to realize that that is a loan. There is an interest charge for doing that, and that the taxes owed will be paid back to the state upon settlement of the estate or upon the owner selling it. So it's a deferred property tax benefit, but certainly can help people with their cash flow, et cetera, in the interim. I want to address a couple rumors. These are frustrating to me, probably to many other people in the community. It's all right to have concerns, but when people are spreading falsehoods, we just need to have people being more responsible than that. There's still a rumor that persists that the new third through fifth grade school would contain a hormone clinic. This couldn't be further from the truth. If people would look on the plans that were submitted as part of the review and comment, they will see that Zerberg put down proposed square footage allotments for that school. And while the final plan hasn't been completed at this point, there are no plans, nor have there ever been plans for any kind of a medical clinic on the new school. And then I just need to remind the general public that you can't even get something as simple as a flu shot without parental permission signed by the parent in the Fergus Falls Public School District. So for those people that are out perpetrating that rumor, please stop, it's untrue. Another rumor that has surfaced recently is the school district is going to fold financially. The school district is very healthy financially, we do have some challenges in front of us in terms of our facility management and the revenue needed to maintain older facilities. That's one of the main reasons that there's a bond in front of the public on November fifth is to address our aging infrastructure. But from our day-to-day operations and from our reserve funds and our fiscal management, we are in very, very healthy position as a school district and do a nice job of being good stewards of the public's dollar. So with that, I will turn it over to any questions.
Any questions for Superintendent Drake?
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay, then we will move on to our general consent items. We have the minutes from September twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, for the board meeting. And then we'll be back, Kirby, with our Bills and Treasurers Report.
Yes, Matt and I came in early and met with Renee before this meeting to go through the Treasurers Report and the monthly bills. And as Superintendent Drake said, our, our fund balance, we are very healthy financially, in good shape. Our fund balance is up nearly three million dollars from what it was last year at this time. Some of that is timing, but it's still, we're in very good shape as far as, as finances go compared to the, the days of being in SOD. Two of the board members here remember those days, those were not fun times, so. So we do have the benefit of having a good fund balance. As far as the bills go, we did approve, or recommend approval of one-point-six-million dollars in bills. That's one-point-one-million from the general fund. Building and construction fund is about three-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, which, right around half of that is for cleaning up some of the Lincoln bills, and the other half was for the paving of the Army Parking Lot. So some of the detail that we went through as we went through, I believe it was sixty-two pages of detailed bills. This time of year, lots of, lots of officials, soccer and football and swimming and tennis and cross-country. So lots of officials coming to the end of the fall sports season, so it's good to see that. I mentioned the, about a hundred and eighty-thousand dollars worth of bills for cleaning up on some of the Lincoln things. Biggest one was CFS Interiors and Flooring, one of the last things that was done was the flooring, that was eighty-two thousand dollars of that hundred and seventy thousand. Another twenty-nine thousand went to Vinco for, for the electrical. And I believe a little bit later on here, we'll talk about the playground. Get to that here shortly, a little bit. Eleven thousand dollars to upgrade the lighting in, in the auditorium. So we're not only doing the sound system, but we've also upgraded some of the lighting. And again, thanks to the Five Forty Four Foundation for their donation for the sound system. HVAC at Cleveland, we are upgrading that, it's a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar project. We paid out about ten thousand dollars on that this month, and that's about a hundred thousand to go. I mentioned the ALC and Army Parking Lot improvements, that was a hundred, just under a hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and seventy thousand. And that was paid with, through our abatement funds, which is just a different source of, of funds. And here we are. We had twenty-five hundred dollars, we've got the, I believe the CNA areas now using some of the things, it was, some of the areas that were used for nine thirty-five, if I'm not correct. And so we spent twenty-five hundred dollars putting in some speakers and some wiring and some of the things to set up for the CNA Certified Nursing. Here's the one, sixteen thousand, two-seventy-five to Vision Concepts for SOD Installation and Hydro Seating at Lincoln. And so I know there were some concerns that we didn't have the green space available, and I was out there this week, and we have one of the nicest green spaces of any of our schools right now for the kindergarten students, so. So that's my report, and thanks to Matt for coming early, and thanks Renee for having things in order as usual.
Awesome, thanks. Okay, then we'll move to now, Renee.
Good evening, everyone. A number of items here, so everything's in front of you, so I'll go over them quickly, quickly. Certified Staff Hires. We have Vanessa Jacobson, who had an increase in contract. Carrie Fields, a new IQ Special Education Teacher, Vanessa's also a current IQ Teacher. Carrie Fields was an additional Special Education Teacher to cover just the new enrollments with our students coming into IQ Academy this fall here. Carrie Tollerson, long-term substitute here at our elementary schools. And then Deb Suter, she is also going to be a long-term substitute over at our Cleveland School for some leave of absence. So that's our Certified Staff Hires. Support Staff Resignations, Amy McClary, new NAR Supervisor. William Scott, also known as Mike, Night Custodian at Kennedy. And Shelby, also known as Opal Scott, Head Custodian at REC. Support Staff Retirement, Stacy Base, Head Custodian at Adams, and we'll have a resolution a little bit later on under New Business for her thirty-four years of service here at our schools. Support Staff Hires, Laura Shaw. Harley Ann Johansson, Gwen Schlesky, those are all specialized paraprofessionals. Sally Carlson Corbett, Non-Public School Registered Nurse. Darren Mukow, Head Custodian at Adams. Darren Mukow, Head Custodian at Roosevelt Education Center. Angela Erickson, we talked about the Registered Dietitian. She has taken on that role here, will be taking on that role, about a hundred and fifty hours for the school year. Dakota Helderson, a Night Custodian at Kennedy Secondary School. Head Coach Resignation, we have Scott Meldoll, who's been working with our adapted bowling team. And then I also been working on comparable worth with some, with staff members that have requested that and going through the process. And so I would request Food Service Job Description seven oh two, a server cook at Kennedy Secondary School, change from three to four, that's the pay grade. And then Food Service Job Description seven sixteen, main server food prep at ALC, and change that from a grade two to a grade three, which matches our other elementary schools. And so we're going to press approval on those items.
Can I get a motion to approve the general consent items?
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is the Washington DC Middle School Student Trip, June eleventh through the fourteenth, twenty-twenty-six, and we presented it at our last board meeting. An emotion to approve that trip?
I'll make that motion.
In a second.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That is approved. Then we have the revisions to our current school board policies that Missy mentioned. Policy four thirty-two, transfer from one group. Policy five eleven, form fundraising. Policy five sixteen, student medication. Policy five twenty-two, Title Nine Sex Non-Discrimination Policy, grievance procedure and process. And policy seven oh four, fixed assets. Can I get a motion to approve those revisions?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Those revisions are approved. And then we have a resolution on the retirement of Stacy Base, where Stacy Base began her employment with the Fergus Falls Public Schools in February nineteen ninety, and where Stacy has been a valued employee with the Fergus Falls Public Schools for the past thirty-four years. And where Stacy has been a dedicated custodian for the district, and now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board to thank Stacy Base for thirty-four years of service to the Fergus Falls Public Schools. Someone offer that resolution, move for its adoption?
I'll offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
And a second.
I'll second that.
And Missy Lute April?
Yes. Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lim?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Bigasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Then our last item on the New Business is the Fall Twenty Twenty-four Memorandum Memorandum of Agreement between University of Minnesota Kirkston, UMN Kirkston, and ISD Five Forty Four outlining fee structure for the college in the high school. CI, CIHS. Do you get a motion to approve that agreement?
So moved.
I'll second that.
And any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Memorandum of Agreement. That concludes our board meeting. Our next regular school board meeting is Monday at October twenty-eighth, five fifteen, here in the Otter Community Room. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In a second.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. We are adjourned.